Can you, real quick question, do you do anything like to, like, I don't know if it's either landscaping around it or anything to, to keep, I don't know, people out of this or protect it?
Yes, that was one of the things that we were looking at, the um.
Like we do in, like in Stony Brook, we.
The fencing?
Yeah, we fence.
It is, it is slated, because of the projects of this year, we, we do not have any more money budgeted for fencing. Um, we had Carter Fence who did the fencing in Stony Brook, uh, is going to do this next year, uh, it will be on the 2020.
We'll do the same kind of style, same height?
You'll have, we'll have, same, same everything.
In a school area too, so.
Yes, and, uh, there's the drain that we put in, we tied it into the storm sewer. Um, we go out, we went out there and checked this after all the good rains, it's working just like we had planned it for. Another thing I want to point out, this part here, that I've got circled, um, we've, we've hired a full-time utility electrician, a very, very good and experienced utility electrician. There's six electrical points right there, uh, when we first bid this out, um, this was about a fourteen, depending on the bid, it was about a twelve to a fifteen thousand dollar extra to fix all of this. We've got meters, uh, we had, um, the, an abandoned irrigation port in there, um, two different meters, two, two concrete pillars and a stainless steel box. Uh, with our, with our new electrician, um, we were able to do all of this work by ourselves in-house completely. And, oh, let me turn that back, we got it into one single panel, uh, which you can see right here. All of that stuff, basically, all the electrical connections were all merged into one panel, in-house. Uh, we did this all at about a savings, anywhere, depending on who did the bid, probably ten to fifteen thousand dollars worth of stuff that, uh, our electrician with our staff, field staff could do, did in-house.
And that's great, because you basically have.
Yeah, that is.
A portion of that.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a.
Just in this one, one specific.
Just in this, just in this area, uh, Bill Shaw was able to really, it paid off in spades, having, uh, an electrician and an experienced utility electrician that knows what he is doing, is able to do all of this, um.
You can't have too many electricians and plumbers.
For this operation, uh, having a bu, having an electrician, uh, is a complete payoff. Now, this is the, uh, and this is what I really wanted to touch on, because we're going to be adding these Thompson bypass pumps to our system. Uh, we're adding two, one mobile and one fixed per year, we've but projected out to 2024. This was the first one that just done at Stony Brook. This is the finished product, uh, with a, um, the concrete pad, uh, the above-ground piping, the new check valve. Um, we run this twice a week, uh, we run it under full load, we'll turn all the other stations on, pump them in. It, it does exactly what we, we, we needed, needed it to do, um, this is another big lesson learned from, uh, Hurricane Irma. Having this pump, uh, this is just another, uh.
You just exercise it.
Well, we run it, we run it under load, we run all the other stations.
Thirty minutes, forty-five minutes?
Uh, for about an hour, uh, this week we ran it for about two hours. We can go down there and we can shut the, the, uh, panel off and the, the pump will kick, will run the entire state, uh, the entire, all of Stony Brook. This is just another angle of it. We installed a new, a new, um, uh, fence with a can lever gate right there for access. The only thing left to do for this project is to do the concrete pad, um, that should be coming up within the next two to three weeks, and that will finish out this project completely. Um, Stony Brook was basically ground zero for the rain event and for Hurricane, Hurricane Irma. It became, uh, grossly hydraulic, hydraulically overloaded, um, and we were having to finagle all the pumps and all the stations around the district to be able to get to, to pump this station out. Uh, this bypass pump, uh, is a excellent feature for that.
Is this electric or diesel?
Looks great.
It's diesel.
Diesel, standalone.
It's great.
It, it turned, it's turned out.
Storage tank?
Excuse me?
Low-ground storage tank?
Uh, no, no, this is, it has an, uh, the storage tank is right in the bottom, right here.
So you just bring in a truck and load it up when you're running it?
What do you?
Run out.
Fuel?
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll refuel it, it, it has an extended gas tank.
Okay.
Um, so this, say this again, these pumps we're going to put out in all of the master stations, or we're projected out up until, I believe, 2024, 2025. Every year we'll be adding one more of these, uh, next year has already been done, uh, for this year, 2020 coming up is going to be at B9. Um, we have the contractor all set up, uh, it's just when the new fiscal year will start. Um, we ran into problems with, um, the emissions on this one because of it was a Yanmar, uh, and they had all kinds of issues, and they came up about six months late on pump delivery. Uh, we didn't get this pump online until about June, uh, it was projected to be in between, I think, December and January, and we got it in June. So it's, it set everything back, um, it should have been completed, uh, six months ahead of schedule, but with the, the pump, we couldn't do anything with it until we got it. But this is something we're, we're going to be doing, adding one of these a year.
Are they equal to the capacity of the station?
Yes.
One pump running or two pumps running?
Both, two pumps running, yes. It can, it can handle, it can handle, we, 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 we shut the power off to the master station and we, and all four pumps, all four stations that pump into it can.
Takes the peaks.
Takes, takes it all.
And Mr., if I may add, a couple of things from an operational standpoint, and even the school board decided why one of these, instead of a generator, an emergency generator will only run one of the two pumps in a duplex station. If the hurricane drops a tree and takes a control panel out, this will still operate the station, and it's also set up to run on skate on the float, so the power's only coming on when you need it, it's not running twenty-four seven. And the electricians also rewired our four generators, that we can hook them up to the float, so instead of it running twenty-four seven and being there, it's only coming on and off when the pumps, pumps are needed. So it's conserving that fuel during a storm. And, uh, and he's doing another thing right now about setting a panel up, so same thing when we bring that emergency generator in.
Somebody opens a manhole and drains the entire county into the system.
It, it, it will, uh, continue to operate, and we can have those generators set up self-supporting, so again, a tree comes down and takes the control panel out, we don't need the panel, there's a panel on that generator.
Which, uh, station is next to get?
Uh, Station B9, which is right down here on Griffin Drive, right past the elementary school.
Silver Lakes.
We will be putting the same model, well, not the same model, but the same type pump, uh, and, and, and that's already done, we're just waiting on the new budget year to do the ordering. Um, and there, there again, Chris, what Chris just touched on, um, as part of the 2019 capital, we went around and added, because we have, are buying mobile bypass pumps. We added, uh, with what are called Quick Connects, and FDP really wanted to look at this, is one of the things they wanted, they mentioned that they wanted to see. Um, we've been tied, added these to every single station, um, and this is a huge, huge addition to our emergency operations, meaning we can roll up on there with that bypass pump, and, and there are two quick connection points right there, ding ding, turn it on. Our staff is, um, every staff member now in, on my side in the field is required to learn how to do all of these setups, um, and this is a really, another nice feature. Um, we're, again, we specked out four fixed bypass pumps and four mobile bypass pumps. So in the end, we'll have four, four bypass pumps that are mobile with Quick Connects, uh, that takes, um, like we, what we found in Irma, it's another lesson learned from Irma. Um, as the days go on, and you're out there working sixteen, seventeen hours a day, the guys start making really stupid mistakes, they, they get fatigued, they get tired. With these Quick Connects, there's no thinking, it's just plug, plug, turn it on, switch the valves, off you go. It's a very nice feature, um, uh, saying, that's what it basically looks like with both of them. That you just put a pump right over next to it, hook it up into one side, hook it up into the other side, it'll drain the tank down, it's a, an excellent feature, uh, and this has been completed. Uh, also, we have an electrician now, like I said, he can build these panels, we build these, we fabricate these panels in-house, uh, one hundred percent. Um, Bentley Electric, we had two different electrical companies come out, um, with the generators. We currently have four electrical generators, um, prior to us having an electrician on the operations side, when we use a generator, we would just plug it in and it would just have to basically sit there and run. I mean, you'd have to physically go out there and turn it off, um, we got the programming down now with Bill that we can pace it, it's called flow pacing, so it'll turn on, run, pump station down, turn back off. Which is just huge in an emergency situation when you're burning gas, um, so we have fabricated these, our staff goes out and, and builds them, installs them, and we run them. I believe Mr. Guy, when you had gone into Hampton Park, you ran into one of our training sessions where they were out here working on these. Um, this is a really great thing too, because now we have four, we'll have four bypass, four generators, so these are Quick Connects, um, this is a really big lesson learned that everybody learned with Irma. Um, these are plugins, where this right here is simple four wires, it will always work, there was no, taking all the guesswork out of it. So you can, our guys, again, are required to come in and at nine o'clock, ten o'clock, hopefully it's raining, when they do it, because when we go out and hook one of these generators up, that's when it's going to be, it's going to be at two in the morning, it's going to be raining, thundering. They're required to go out and set these up with the electrician, so that everybody knows who's a field staff, can take one of these generators out and hook them up and get that station pumped down. Um, this is a huge thing with Irma, um, with these plugins, what, with what happened with a lot of the municipalities was, was that the plugins, they don't work. And they, they aren't exercised, and you, you get into an emergency situation, that's when you find out, and that is exactly when you do not want to be finding this out. So with these connections here, three wires and a, uh, ground, we've color-coded them, made it just simple. So this is all done in-house, so, uh, electric companies, we had two different electric companies come in and bid this, we were sitting at about twenty-five hundred dollars per box, we're doing it for about five hundred dollars a box, and we're getting it operational. So we put, we were, we were, we've planned to put every one of these in every one of our stations, so we'll have either a bypass Quick Connect or an electrical Quick Connect.
Station right here.
This is Station B1, Commerce Lakes and Griffin Drive.
Oh, right over here by the, uh, uh, seven eleven.
B1, yes. And that, say, and that's, that's a really nice feature, um, and then on this side, uh, what you're going to see here, I keep talking about the oak trees. Okay, so this year, we have done, we'll either get them on the sewer or the potable water side. This is a potable, uh, sewer, sewer cleanout break that we found cambering, um, and usually we only find about these, out about these when we have a sewer backup or an overflow or something that has happened. We'll come out, um, but we came out and we found this one on a camera job, uh, oak tree got into it, completely ruined it, we have all kinds of eye and eye. These sewer jobs right here are averaging anywhere from about fifteen to about three thousand dollars a pop, um, and when we find them, we have to repair them, or when we get, someone calls us and says we have a sewer break and we find this, it's, it's a next-day thing, we have to re, repair it. Um, very common with the oak trees, and as we go along, we're just, it's, it just keeps getting worse. Um, in the last, say, from June to now, we've spent, I think, sixteen thousand dollars on, I think, five different repairs. Um, the sewer side is always messier, um, depending on the situation, uh, sewer is never good, but these can get to be real. We have to cut the sidewalk, we have to do all kinds of, uh, really invasive stuff to do this, um, so we see this a lot, that's what it'll look like when it is, when it's completely repaired. It can't, this is a brand-new, we did this, yeah, this is the Stony Brook break, so this is basically just basically what it looks like when we done, when we're done, you can see all the roots, the giant tree bulbs that we have to cut out of these, out of these to get in there and repair them. Um, and this can take, uh, uh, anywhere from two hours to two days to do these repairs.
And four-inch lines coming in?
Yes, these, this is, well, these are the four inches going into the, into the common, the cleanout.
Clean line going into the cleanout and out to the main.
That's where the majority of our repairs are, are right at the cleanouts. Um, say, uh, this, this one here, I wanted to show you this one because this is one we did in Devon Chatter Lakes, now we, we've piloted this. Uh, what's happened in this one is, is we have about a thirty-year-old, the twenty-five-year-old oak tree, that at one time was a little stick and now is a gigantic tree. Uh, this tree had been cut out, uh, it was just a stump, but what happened was we got a leak, uh, we went out and investigated it, we realized that, you know, it's another oak tree job, so we find, we come into this. So we piloted this to do it on our own, we've made some, uh, staff hires, uh, especially Mr. Libretto, who you all have met, um, we got the mini excavator that we budgeted for next year, we got the trailer, we got all the equipment, and we went out and did it ourselves. Um, the most expensive root job that we had this year was forty-eight hundred dollars, and they're running about twenty-five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. So we went out and did this with all the rentals, the time spent, it took us six and a half hours to get this completely stopped, and we did it for about thirteen hundred dollars.
That looks like a main, that doesn't look like a service lateral.
That's a service lateral buried, it's right out back here, uh, and.
What kind of flow is coming out of a house like that?
That's what you'll see.
Good lord, what was it backed up?
No, they, it had a leak, um, and when we cut that piece out, it really opened it up, but it was bubbling up through the ground and.
It's also the service lateral.
Yes.
Holy.
And that is crazy, see, if you walk out back, you can see the stump and you can still see the line running through that, through the, around, through the oak tree, um.
Put that in the museum.
Yeah, yeah, uh, this is very common, and we're going to, we're going to see a lot of these as these fifteen, fifteen-year communities, twenty-year communities, as the, as these oak trees grow, they can strip these lines, we get pressure issues. Um, this is a very evasive one, um, we've come up with some really good, I think, workarounds for these, going down to the road, where it comes out of the, the road, and catching it there and just going around it and just avoiding this altogether. In some situations, say Cypress Point is the worst one that I've seen, uh, in our, in Gateway, um, where the trees are right on the road, so we're not going to have that option. So if we, we're going to get breaks, we're going to have to go into that tree, basically, um, some of the ones, like say Stony Brook, we can work bypasses and go around them. Um, uh, Gateway Greens is another, the older sections there, you're going to start seeing this, this non-stop, um, say, uh, that's, that's basically it.
This makes me really, really glad that we removed our oak tree out.
Yeah, these, 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 these are very, it's, say, this is a very common thing, but if you look at, say, at this flow right here, when we got there before we removed all that, it's just a, it's just a slow percolating out of the ground. We don't realize, until you get into that, where that line can be in completely embedded, the only thing we could do is cut the line to get, to get at it. Um, and we got lucky on this one, but, say, if we contract this out like we normally do and have been doing over the years, you're looking at anywhere from three to five thousand dollars for each one. And it is a very evasive, you ruin the front yard, you got to get equipment in there, it's, it's, it can be, turn into a real mess. So basically, uh, that is, we've budgeted for all this equipment for next year, so we're looking with the staff that we've got and training everyone to start doing this all in-house, uh, which, at, at a real significant savings.
I mean, I think, um, just going back to the, the pump station maintenance and, and improvements, I would capture as much information as you can, and I would love to see staff work on just a little white paper that we can submit to like FASD or somewhere else, and just, because there's a lot of really great best practices there.
There is.
You know, everything from just the utility hookups to the Quick Connects to, you know, the pump and all the work, I mean, that would, that would really be.
And it's, and it's, it's, it's done in staff, or in-house, a lot, the majority of it.
Well, I think that's the theme, is building in-house capability while you're improving your, your, your systems.
And the residents need to hear that, that this is, you know, this is efficiency and it's saving you money, this is your tax dollars that are being saved.
These are, these are great best practices, I mean, we've gone from being reactive, you know, to.
Twenty twenty, we should be really, we're going to really get proactive, you know, we've learned a lot and we're, our, our capabilities are just growing.
That's, that was, that's really good.
Congratulations to both, uh, Chrissy and Kenny, this is great, this is great news.
And that's, that's basically it.
Cut down all the oak trees.
Well, my old house, the oak tree raised the, one of the slabs up about four inches, and there's nothing you can do about that except rip it up.
One fell at my house, took my foot off my screen enclosure.
Chris, was there anything else on staff reports?
Um, no, there was just a couple items, you know, administrative that we're trying to do and, um, clearing that up, and, and I'll give ninety-nine percent of the credit for all of that to Kenny, you know, help work on the budgets and secure the funding and on the rate case side, so the money comes in, we can do it, but it's all operations. And I hate utility operations. And you know why? Because it's always raining, it's always wet, it's always late, it's, it's always Friday or a hurricane and.
Yeah.
Boots and slickers.
Everything breaks on Friday and Sunday.
Yeah.
I wanted to touch on, um, the comparison, um, with what you were saying on the, the overflow and the, the tanks, um, with Irma, we overflowed. Uh, one of the biggest reasons we overflowed because of that, um, is when Irma hit, we were sitting at twenty-six feet on those tanks, uh, the tank level. Um, we didn't, we were not able to run the irrigation system to move that water out for six days. Once we got that going, we dropped the tank level, but what happened was that, uh, the power line in the back blew out, the center phase. So we had lost three days there, and that really is what caused us to overflow the way we did, whereas this year with, with the run-up to the storm coming in, we were able to get that tank down to about nine feet. And we worked with Lee County, and they were, they, by the time we were done, had we taken a direct hit, we would have had about eleven days of complete storage before we would have overflowed.
Fantastic.
Yeah, and that, there again, with our, with our new skater system, our new monitoring system, we're able to do all this remotely, which during, uh, Irma, we were not, we, we weren't able to do. So in the run-up to that, we were down, uh, to nine feet, so I mean, that makes a huge difference.
And that also reduces our liability.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
What was the amount of the final check from FEMA?
Uh, I think our final reimbursement was two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
It's right here in the financial statement.
Yeah. Indeed it is.
And we probably spent about twenty thousand dollars in staff time processing and dealing with all that paperwork. Because if you saw the amount of paperwork connected with that, it's over the top.
All right, I'll, while she's, what else did you have?
That was it?
That was it?
Okay.
Uh, move on to then, Pelican Preserve Downspout Initiative.
Sure, this is just a continuation of phase of their downspout initiative where they're running the, uh, roof gutters and, uh, taking them out to lake and putting them into drains to prevent any erosion on the shorelines. And, uh, these are, um, eleven separate projects, they'll just be going, um, continuous, it could take six to eight months to finish all these. And, uh, P-PAC will, will go in and give the notice to proceed on each of those projects, and then they approve the payment, and we're just processing the paperwork for them. So we wanted to approve all of them at one time instead of coming back three or four times to the board, but this is in their budget.
We need a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
They have a motion and a second? I'll let, I'll let these two finish.
They're checking the math.
Looking for a figure. Thank you, I'm sorry, that just, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve the Pelican Preserve Downspout.
All the fives at the end, you know that? I am ready to vote yes for that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next is consideration to assume street lighting costs at Commerce Lakes Boulevard.
And, and I'll let, I'll let Tony chime in on this in a moment, but, um, basically, last year we had this thing that the, uh, folks that were paying the streetlights, and we don't know who they are because they don't give us that account information. Um, just continued it, and somebody picked that account up, it wasn't us, and, uh, we've received notice from Florida Power and Light that they assume we'll be turning off those streetlights in Commerce Lakes. It's interesting that of those poles, three of them actually are in our right, four, are in our right-of-way, so thank you for paying that bill, um, for us historically. But, uh, to pick up that, it's four hundred and twenty dollars a month, um, so significant, um, and I just was bringing it to the board because we've been talking about taking the roadway over and, uh, just looking at it as a safety factor, but it's li, literally something too that's not budgeted, but a little over five thousand a year, but the poles are owned by Florida Power.
Yeah, uh, and that's important, that they're owned by Florida Power and Light, and there are four, maybe five poles within the district-owned right-of-way, going from east from Gateway Boulevard. And the balance of them appear to be within an easement in favor of the district to maintain and operate streetlights. So we don't, the district does not need to own the road right-of-way to have the ability to legitimately expend the funds if they wish to, to operate these, uh, streetlights or pay for them.
And this is the section of road we're trying to get transferred.
This goes all the way over to Daniels, correct. Well, it's the whole segment, it's all of it from Gateway Boulevard to Daniels.
Gateway Boulevard to Daniels.
Including the parts that Lee County doesn't recognize that we own.
Do we, wait, 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 do we have a light, or is there one of these lights in the segment that we own?
Yes, four of them are, at least four, maybe five.
It can't be.
Yes.
We, we went out and field verified them and the IDs on the lights.
Our section only goes to Daniels, uh, Preserve.
Doesn't go that far.
It doesn't go that far, yeah.
But there are.
It's the ones by Gateway Boulevard and closer to Gateway Boulevard and Commerce Lakes.
Yeah.
There's a spacing on these lights.
Not that much, let me see if I can find it.
I figured there might be two at the most.
At least four.
I was going to say three or four.
We need to.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
It's a safety issue, you can't turn those off.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve to assuming the street lighting costs on Commerce Lakes Drive, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We ought to let Daniels Preserve and some of those people know that that, they can breathe again now.
They're, they're watching.
They're watching.
And Chris, next is the utility true-up.
Yeah, and this is, uh, one of Mr. Tinkle's favorite pet projects, but we've been working with Lee County, and originally, you know, it was the sixty-four thousand dollar question, and they were looking at a total allocation with their operation and maintenance costs on plant capacity, not on our actual use. And, uh, we brought that figure down to the last two years, um, that we would pay them twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-three cents, and, uh, we also have in the budget, um, for this next year, fifty thousand dollars to cover this true-up cost. And it hasn't been a consideration in the, in the history of the utility department because there was a huge overcharge by Lee County, so they had been whittling down that credit for years, but now it's a direct payment. And this will bring us current with them, uh, we're trying to get that payment made by, uh, October.
So, so, somebody check the math on all this?
Yes, and, uh, we, we looked at the, as a matter of fact, it's interesting, because one of the consultants that helped worked on that, worked on the Gateway rate case, and then was working for Lee County. And I have the memorandums in the background, but, uh, we think the twenty-six thousand, seven forty-four for the two-year period to bring us current is fair and equitable.
So, what are we, wanting a, an authorization of paying the twenty-six thousand and change?
Yes, sir, twenty-six thousand, seven forty-four and eighty-three cents payable to Lee County Utilities.
Can I add reluctantly in front of that motion? A motion to approve.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and a second to authorize the payment of the utility services true-up with Lee County, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We make sure we leave a good comment in the memo second.
Reluctantly.
Well, I was going to go a little different, but not a worry.
Throw it to you to beat you out of it.
Thank you for acknowledging, we don't need a permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we had that discussion at the meeting, and they apologized profusely and said it was the bureaucracy that didn't understand the contractual terms of the agreement.
Yeah, if you buy that.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda items, does anybody have anything they want to pull?
I want to make a comment on the financial statements, ma'am.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yep, go right ahead.
I want you to look at page one hundred and fifteen, uh, agenda page, please.
Yes.
You're, you're on the financial bill?
Yes.
Financial.
Yep. Under the revenue section for the general fund, you may remember that several months ago, I was very worried that our, uh, uh, special assessments are going to be, going to be coming in low. I'm pleased, somewhat chagrined and surprised and all of a thing that, uh, on a three-point-one-million-dollar budget item, we were five dollars off.
Wow.
Who screwed that up?
I don't know how, I don't know how you can get any closer than that, but, uh.
Steve Blum will tell you, he's good.
It makes me wonder if somebody's been cooking around, but, uh, anyway, we're, we're not going to, we're not going to have a hundred and fifty or so shortages that I was really worried about there, and I just wanted to point out that.
Steve, Steve said it, Steve said it'd come around.
Yeah, he sure did.
You'd rather be lucky than good.
Anybody else have any comments on the minutes or the financials? They'll take a motion to approve consent agenda items five A and B.
So, so move.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that brings us to supervisor comments, Mrs. Flaherty, I'll start down at your end, okay?
Um, we have several, okay, um, the first thing is, how much did it cost to mail out the second, um, mailage of, or the notice for the public hearing?
Hope it was free for the newspaper.
I, I couldn't tell you that because they send it out, I could get that figure, but I imagine forty-five cents plus the, uh, bill from the mailing company, plus the printing of the flyer. It would have to be several thousand dollars.
And that came out of our pocket?
Um, at the moment, I'm not sure who paid for that, I'll find out for you though.
Okay, I was just curious.
It should be the newspaper.
But trying to get the newspaper to pay that would probably be very difficult.
Yeah, they probably would.
I thought they were the one who screwed it up.
Well, they did, and I, I can see.
They did, and so they did the advertising fee, and we have, it was in the twenty-first and twenty-eighth, but to try to get, um, we could make a claim against them, but chasing them. But to try to get, we could make a claim against them, but chasing them costs us more to do that.
And, and also those offices aren't in this area. A lot of that's all done by their parent remote in New Jersey or Texas.
Well, the two, the, the full-page ad that was just in the paper, and then the smaller ad, they paid for that.
They shouldn't, the newspaper should not bill us for that.
They should not bill us for that. Now that, I'd step over the line on that one.
And I haven't, I haven't seen an invoice yet, so we'll, we'll see.
That might be the way to address it.
I'll be more than happy to make the motion when you bring that forward.
And that might be the approach, that we don't owe them anything.
Don't owe them anything.
Go get in a fight with people who buy their ink by the barrel.
They, they still have barrels or not anymore with the new printing tech? They're going away from the print medium.
And, and to make a step from that, I actually got Commissioner Pendergrass, their local vice president, involved because when Infomark was dealing with them and they kinda got into that tit-for-tat over publishing and that, the fellow at the other end of the telephone line said, well, we just won't publish it, and hung up on them. Because they're, they're under no obligation to accept our advertisements, so.
Once they do, they need to do it right, so.
And they did, and it, it all worked out happily ever after, but there was a lot of behind-the-scenes movement going on and getting some politicians involved in it and local folks.
See what you, see what you started?
I know, I just wanted to know how much of that extra mailing cost, that's all. Okay, my list, you know, it's, okay. Mr. Guy mentioned the hole, the potholes, okay? All right, you had mentioned you were gonna take care of all the blue paint that was in Stony Brook from Comcast. Well, you haven't finished it yet?
Probably not, they might've got called to do something different, I know they were out there working on it.
Cause I know Greenstone, no, Gemstone, I'm sorry, Gemstone has it all. And you got Pass My House on Ivory Stone, and then the rest of the loop, okay? Only because there are several people who are complaining because they have to clean their driveways and sidewalks and it won't come off.
What do you, pressure wash those?
Yeah, we use a chemical and then pressure wash it. And the fellow that was doing the marking on those utility locates used a regular spray enamel paint, he's no longer with us.
The standard marking paint he used like permanent paint, like.
Rust-olium?
Cementolium, but yeah, and it's very, it's very difficult to get off.
Yeah.
I mean, it'll, it'll wear out in another few months, but.
No, it's been there like over a year now, so it's just seems to be.
And unfortunately, when you get those things like Kenny was showing you on Daniels where water's bubbling up and that, the crew gets called away from some of those menial day-to-day maintenance tasks. And we're, we kinda get into administrative mode or getting ready for the hurricane. We, it's all hands on deck, you know, all six of them.
Wow, all right, the other one was covered. Pigs, there's pigs behind Stony Brook in that reserve? Is there any chance we can have somebody go out and check those pigs out?
I think we need, need to be more concerned about the coyotes that we have.
Coyotes, well.
I saw some nice pictures of them standing around in Stony Brook, I was surprised, they're usually hard to find.
I know that we have, I know that we have a trap in the preserve area to try and catch the pigs and a couple cameras.
Okay, cause I was, that was brought to my attention.
Yeah, we referred some of the trappers to the HOA because some, after that last discussion in Hampton Park, our, our standard response is it's an HOA issue.
I'll take care of them.
Gunfire involved.
Coyotes versus. Have you heard anything more about those apartments that they want to build on the corner of Griffin and Gateway?
No, they did get the grass cut there. It was a call from Jim Brand, the code enforcement, and their contractor also parked his rig during the rain and put two-foot deep ruts in our sod and told me he was gonna fix it and sand it, and he didn't. So we're probably gonna continue some conversations with them.
Okay, I know that Mr. Shoemaker stopped the Mainscapes' drive-around. I thought it was in the Mainscape contract for them to do it, it was accountability, is it in their contract?
I don't know if it's specifically in their contract, I, I didn't stop the ride-around with Mainscape, I stopped the supervisor's participation in the ride-around with Mainscape.
Okay, cause on January first, two thousand seventeen, what I had asked for, okay, was for Mainscape to come to our meeting so we could adjust some of the problems that they were giving us, that they weren't doing. And you're, the solution to the board was for me to go with them, that was the, I, I mean, I spend two to three hours a week going out and trying to correct things. However, if Mainscape would like to come to the meeting so that things can be addressed, just like we need that palm tree that still hasn't been put up by Metpar, Metcar, Met Tower that is dead in Stony Brook. So I just was wondering, you know. I had gone around to find out like things that needed to be done, things that weren't getting done. And I get the report back if they've done them, just like, how can I say, the weeding, okay? And things that are dying that need to be replaced.
How often were the ride-arounds?
They were once a week.
So, was that a problem for the supervisors at Mainscapes? Cause it seems like a lot of riding around.
Well, when we first talked about that and had the meeting, the vice president with the Mainscape said he thought it was entirely inappropriate to have a supervisor, elected official, working with staff like that. He said, we have staff, you have staff, the staff should be doing that, not a supervisor, and I agree with them.
So here's what, I absolutely appreciate when supervisors take an interest in, in certain things. I think it's, it's how we drive, you know, subject matter expertise. I mean, I, I could never replicate what Ed does or Kathleen with, with landscaping and the historical knowledge that Bill and Margaret has. But I do think there is probably alternatives that we can introduce. I think that is a staff responsibility. What, what I would probably recommend is Kathy continue to work with Elle or whoever in, with staff to continue to do her oversight. So if we eliminate that, that ride-along, I don't want to eliminate Kathleen's ability to stay engaged and to hold some accountability, cause she's got, you know, she's really put in a lot of effort there and I think needs to continue. The one thing that I would also add too is, I think our vendors should be coming in on some type of frequency. I mean, not, not every meeting and maybe not once a month, but maybe we rotate them through. Quarterly, you know, and not on the same day, so we would kinda rotate them through. So each quarter, we'd have Mainscape come in, we'd have Aquagenics come in. And they just give a little overview, no more than ten minutes, and just give us an opportunity to ask questions and, and hold them accountable. So I think there might be, maybe a solution somewhere in the middle there, maybe?
Maybe meeting with the person once a month from, and Mainscape at the same time? Cause when I go around, we could see what they've picked up and what the person in the office has picked up and what I've picked up, and see what's accomplished.
Yeah, I think we're the, we're, for me, the kinda chain of command and scope would be, you work in directly with staff, staff communicates with Mainscape. Cause I think the, the lines get a little blurred if, if it's a supervisor that's dictating direction to, to the vendor. And I think we've tried to stay away from that, so.
And that's one of the, one of the reasons for our hire and getting Glenn because of his background with HOA, CDDs, golf courses, you know, large-scale developments like Benita Bay, to give that million-dollar-plus contract the attention that it needs and demanding that kind of accountability. Elle's been working for him for years, but she's really spread too thin. And she doesn't have that irrigation experience, so we're hoping to get a lot more accountability and performance out of that vendor by having somebody dedicated, you know, to that work.
Okay.
So therefore, I would be meeting with Glenn?
Glenn would be the person, cause he's gonna be the go-between now.
So I would meet with him every other week or once a month?
I'd say once a month would probably be a good frequency, but you know, I would, if, if it was me in your shoes, I would continue to have the amount of, you know, diligence that, diligence that you've been doing. Cause I think holding Mainscape accountable by working directly with staff is a great way to, to have oversight. I mean, I mean, Ed does it all the time. You know, he's, he's always looking at, you know, vendors and other things. And I think it does, it does help, so that's what I would recommend, is probably a, at least a monthly touch base. But if you see something, I mean, you're, you're our eyes in, in that case.
Tell you that, I have learned a lot, I mean, you don't know how many books Elle has given me to read that I have learned so much. I mean, between native, and that's a lot of things, is we were trying to go native with everything rather than non-native. So it would be more.
Florida friend.
Florida friend, thank you. So, um, do you want me just to meet with him or go around with him?
I, I'm gonna direct you to Chris to see how he wants to set that up with new staff members.
Maybe we'll do that ride-along, but like once a month and the ride and the rest of it just through customer care at GatewayService.com. And some of that, Kathy's a great go-between, cause the residents complain to her, so, you know, make statements. And what I told her was, I said, tell the residents they have a problem, just send something here and we'll put a work order out or try to address it.
Well, I mean, I actually get calls and emails so that I have to go and I meet the people. The dog park, I've met them everywhere.
But we should be, but we should be directing people to, to contact staff because we need to be documenting all these issues as, you know, or else we can't, the staff doesn't know. I mean, I know that you communicate to them, but I would direct, uh, direct those to.
Do that, but I mean, they're.
They're gonna go to you because.
And they see me in a grocery store and they'll, I'm honest, they stop me.
You can have the dog park.
I just say that was.
All in on that.
Consolation prize.
Take the soccer fields with it?
We do go through the soccer fields when we, when we went through, so. So I, I will meet with Mr. Shoemaker and we will set up a schedule, is that correct?
Yes.
Anything else?
I think I covered enough, didn't I?
Just asking, Mr. Guy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I just want to make sure that my calendar is up to date. As far as our next meeting is concerned, I have it listed.
Six o'clock.
For next Thursday, the twelfth, at six PM in this building, am I correct?
You are correct, indeed you are correct, and that's for passing the budget. That's what was advertised in the local paper, which I get and have correctly the status.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, that'll take care of me.
Thank you, Mr. Guy, I was gonna make sure that everybody remembered that, but you took, you did it, and that's perfect. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I just have a couple things. First, I had an issue with my email, so I worked with Will at our tech company, I can't remember the name of it, but. And so, we were talking, cause I, I use a lot of different computers, but I've never used a Chromebook before. So it was a little bit of a ramp-up. And I did ask Will if he would be willing to come into one of the workshops times and spend thirty minutes with the board, just kind of walking us through functionality with the Chromebook. But more importantly, looking at some opportunities for us to build a shared calendar. So we have, I think most of you are using Outlook on your Chromebook. So in Outlook, there's a calendar, so we can create a shared calendar for the supervisors. I'm sorry? How do you access your mail?
Google.
Okay, well.
I, I actually know how to use the Chrome.
Okay, well, regardless, creating a shared calendar, so we could put meetings, any critical dates, because we don't all have a shared calendar view. And there's nowhere to really go to get, if, if we have any questions specific to things that we, that would be important to us. So it'd be an opportunity to have ability on the Chromebook for us to access a shared calendar. I also talked to him about also creating maybe a shared folder, which you could do that through Office 365, or you could do it through the Google platform, which is very easy to access. And the advantage of that is, let's say, Board Book goes out and Tony has some addendums that he wants to send. So he's gonna either shoot them through email, or he'll print all the stuff out and bring it to the meeting. He could simply send it to staff, they could drop it in the shared folder. So you'd have a folder that's a meet for each meeting, almost like a, you know, with a Board Book, and we could just access the documents there, but not to get in the weeds. But I want, I asked him if he would be willing to come in, just give us a, you know, thirty-minute technology overview and to spend some time talking about potential recommendations from a technology perspective that will help us do our jobs, manage documents, share information. So I think it's a real opportunity, if, if no one has any issues with that. I just want to let Chris know that we're okay with that and he can set it up.
I don't have any problem with that, I think we need to be careful about sharing documents between the supervisors.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I sort of perked up.
I could see Tony over there, you know.
Saying carefully, yeah, the idea of, like you said, updating agendas and doing those kind of items, which is purely, goes to everybody as opposed to exchanging ideas and.
No, 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 it's, it would be.
We can talk about the parameters for that.
Where, somewhere to drop information for, for Board Book, not, not to exchange information or update.
You could have the manager be the moderator of that.
Yeah, so, I mean, again, not a solution here, but I think there is opportunities for us to better leverage technology.
Yeah, and along those lines too, maybe, and Chris, I don't know what we have set up with any vendor for security because of the rise of the phishing, spearing, you know, all those scams that are going on, where the city of Naples paid out seven hundred thousand dollars on a.
Ransom.
On a, it wasn't ransom, it was actually somebody changed some of the information on a request for a contract. Khyra County paid a hundred and some odd, sixty-four thousand dollars because somebody hacked into the county's system or a vendor's system, then sent the county an email and saying, please make your next payment ACH direct to this account, change bank accounts. And that went to the county purchasing, county purchasing plopped it in their program. The clerk just pays to the account number that the county purchasing has, voila, a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars down the drain. I had a situation where I had a closing back in June. My client says, I'm not sure if I understand your wire instructions. I said, I didn't send you any wire instructions. So he sends me the wire instructions for a Chase Bank trust account that we don't maintain, where this hacker wanted seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars wired, which was the closing proceeds, so.
It's amazing.
It's amazing, so I mean, it's just one of those things, be on alert. Not just a ransomware, but just plain old fraudulent, you know, the phishing scam to get your email accounts or wire transfers. Some managers I know are not paying at all by wire or ACH anymore, it's all check. They switched, they've gone back the old way.
What was the old way?
Just write a check and drop it in the mail.
Cash. Cash, I was gonna say cash.
Stones and beads.
Duffel bag of cash.
Yeah, my corn for your cow, I guess.
So the, one other item, I had someone in Hampton Park reach out to me, and I'll email you this address, Chris, but it's ten three oh two Templeton Lane. They're basically, and it's, I kinda walked around the lake and it's only in isolated areas, but there is an excessive amount of plant growth on the, on the bank side, but it's not litorals. Is, you know, whatever that is. But, and, and if you, if you look like around, it's not everywhere else. It's only in a couple isolated areas where it's, where it's pretty thick there. So I, I just told that person I would, I mean, it's pretty thick and, so I guess, I mean, that's within our jurisdiction, but I don't know if we need to send somebody there to spray or, and it's only, it's happened in the last month, so with all the rain, it's just taken off.
The water level's so high, it popped up on the other side, yeah.
It's kinda weird.
I'll send it over to Aquagenics.
So I'll send you the address. But again, it's only in, it was in about a thirty-yard span, then nothing, and then a little bit further down, so, you know. So I'll send you the address if you can just get somebody out there to take care of. The other thing I had, I, I was thinking about, and, and not to say that I, this is something that I think we should do, but something maybe to consider. So now that we've squashed the storage area in the, in the back area of the, of the soccer complex, I was thinking that could be a potential area to repurpose some of the, basically to pick up the fun park and, and repurpose that back lot area. And what I mean by that is, you know, we've talked about putting bocce over there. What the fun park has is a playground, volleyball, and a basketball court. We could easily, you know, maybe relocate, you know, basketball court over there. We've already talked about bocce in that back area. And we would just, probably just enhance the playground area here, the pre-existing, if we wanted to eliminate the fun park, you know, as, as a possibility to solve some, some issues. Now, there may be some pushback of people that use that fun park, cause it's in a centrally-located place. So, and again, I don't know if I'm for or against this, but just is something that we could consider. We've got the land available, it has limited use at this point. So there may be an area as an interim solution prior to we, a much longer-term build-out of the common, or the pool area, the Commons Park area, you know, future planning. Because we're not gonna be able to fund, you know, a, a park build-out at this point with all the lakes and all the other stuff that we have to do. So just chew on it, no, no decision. If it seems like a good idea, we can have more conversation around it. If it's like, hey, we don't, there, there's no reason to do it now, I think we could do it at a, at a low cost. So I just thought I would throw that out there just for consideration, but that's all I have.
Before I go to you, Kathy had a question.
Yeah, where is Coral Springs?
Over on the.
By Lauderdale.
North, north and west.
I got an email.
I did too.
Oh, you did too. Okay, I just.
You wanted his assessment lower.
Right, and I, I didn't know where Coral Springs was.
Oh, I had that on my list to bring up today too. I'm like, why is he talking, why is he asking about taxes?
Guy's seventy-five Dewey's, make a little love at the.
I responded back and told him we're tripling it, we're not doubling it.
I, I responded back that somebody gave him our information in error, or at least I, I didn't know everyone else had gotten it too. I said he had been given my information in error.
You didn't tell him the new account to send it to? Opportunity, good lead.
Thank you, I just.
I have a, I don't think I ever want to visit a jail, so I don't, I don't do fraud.
I have two things. One, thank Chris on the storm prep, getting those weirs opened up and getting the water level down. May have been a false alarm, but it could have been a disaster if we hadn't have. And then the second thing is following up on what Doug said earlier. Well, I tell you, I can't stress, I agree with you. We, we gotta get this accounting and this public works issue taken care of. Have we got a, what's the word I want?
Like a job description?
Yeah, a job description and an advertisement out for, for people? Are we getting anybody?
Yeah, we are, we've, we've been getting some good talent. It's, you know, it's not some in the right places. Some people have a heavy background on the environmental side, but no construction management or, you know, practical experience, so you're kinda, and I've kinda pushed to looking at some candidates Kenny refers to as gray hairs. I don't take exception to that, but.
It happens. Okay, well, I'm, I'm just, I'm concerned. I agree with Doug. This is, this is critical. I, I think it's critical.
I think you'll find this situation straightened out by October first.
I, I, I like, I like the idea of the cross-training and everything, but we're piling on what, what Mike, with his leaving, somebody's picking up here and doing a lot, a lot of extra work.
Well, and Mike's, if you look at his job description, I mean, that accounting and finance piece was, was what he was hired for. But he was also doing HR, he was doing, you know, a lot of other stuff, which is what happens in an environment like this. But now, when that person leaves, not only is he vacating his role, but he's vacating two or three other things that
It's not just, not good.
we have no one here doing.
I'm, I'm all, all for anything that can be done to get those two positions filled, especially that ponds and wetlands.
I just hate waiting on.
It's a mess.
The building as a constraint to us hiring staff, and I know it's, it's important, but.
I'm not, I'm kind of, they're getting mobile. You might see me coming in asking for another trucks, but a truck and a laptop's kinda the way, you know, that we're going with a lot of our.
It's interim, right? I mean, we can, we can explain, look, we're adding a new building, you know.
That's all I had.
I did not have anything. I'll see everybody next week at this same place at six o'clock, and this meeting is adjourned at five twenty-seven.
See you, Mr. Schaefer, next week. Sorry.
Forgot about the meeting.
He'll be the one person that shows up.
Budget. Sorry.
Yeah, I did make the comment too, man.
I was on, I was on the road and I didn't put it in my calendar.